With the increases in fuel prices and the cost of living generally. And we feel it is really important that we try and encourage as many people and organisations as possible to support the campaign. Five parish councils have already contributed, so we are approaching you to encourage you to join them and help us reach our target by the end of the month if we can.
Yeah, do we know what the other councils are on? Can we ask them to make a decision on those? But what do the other councils, do we know what the councils?
I don't know.
What, did we do this before, Alan?
It's the first time.
First time.
Do these run things in this area? You know, because we have that place that comes from Fitzwilliam, don't we? Do they run things, do they run things in this area, Alan? Do we know?
It's in the whole district, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so what are we going to propose? Obviously, we are going to propose something.
Do we know what their target is per month? Or is this just going to be a one-off payment? Are they going to need spent per month?
It sounds like a one-off.
Their target is thirty thousand.
Per month?
For the year.
For the year.
Sorry?
Per year.
Can I suggest five hundred? Then it is a good.
That's what we can do for rounds, yeah.
Yeah.
Our second.
We're all in favour, yeah, for five hundred, Alan. Item nine, Emsworth Water Park Fun Fair to consider request to hold a fun fair in the park at Easter from thirteenth to sixteenth of April, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other request from Mr Tucker, he's already booked in, but his fare is for August bank holiday members will return. He's requested now if he could have the fun fair at the park at Easter from the thirteenth to sixteenth of April. I recommend if members do want to prove it, that it'll be on the same terms, same location, only one catering unit. And as to the costs, Madam Chair, it's up to members, but it was four forty for August, this is half that period, so you might want to put around it to two twenty. But it is two bank holidays as well, Good Friday, at Easter Monday.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thought we had an proposal?
I think.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
I don't propose it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we all in favour? Yeah.
Item ten, one of allotments, to consider bringing the main gate at the allotment site forward to its former position. Alan?
Well, I just want to understand why we got rid of some of those assets by taking this gate back. I think we need to bring it back to where it should be and look after it ourselves.
Well, Council Dobson proposed that, Chair.
He didn't, he didn't.
Back in two years.
That's a lie.
Because he lost him off a bus.
Just a minute, hang on a minute.
That's a lie.
Quiet, quiet, quiet.
I did not propose it. I asked him to help with the car parking situation.
Council Dobson.
I asked him to act with the.
Just put your hand up and I'll come to you or I won't acknowledge you.
Please, you're saying, I'm not bothered.
Can I, can I just, can I just?
He's a liar.
All right, Alan, can I just say, I've looked at minutes, didn't propose it. He asked him to look after the car park.
Car parking.
To try and sort the car parking out in that area. He didn't ask him to move the fence. He asked for the car parking to be sorted. And he went in, he moved the fence, he made his car park what is not fit for purpose, and we will need that asset back.
It belongs to wait through anyway.
Chair, he doesn't.
It belonged to wait through before, I do believe.
Yeah, but so why did we do it? So why did we do it?
To allow, because people were parking in front of our.
Without asking the school, without asking the schools.
I asked you if anybody could help.
Right.
Would you help?
Jim, put your hand up when you want to speak. Be quiet, please. Right, so I, I suggest then.
You know, I'm gonna put my hand up. Let your mind up. I've put a puppy on the bar, keep it down, or can I just speak like he does?
I've been told he's had too many pints.
When you leave, I'm.
You can't do stuff like that. When you can't.
When he comes, he takes his hand up.
I'm just suspending me.
Suspend me, please.
Oh.
Ten minutes, yes.
We're not going to stay here then.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine, then.
Making accusations, that's flat for accusations of mentalised, what I.
My gosh, you can't.
Exactly.
You want to watch it, yeah, right? Yeah, exactly. You want to watch it all fed up with you. Lie after lie. Ten minutes, okay, twelve.
The first thing I'm going to buy, I think, the.
Yeah. I think that was what I had last time, I just kept up. I was going to go again. Yes, it's one minute. Cool, thank you. Um, when it comes to explosion, I'd suggest you just switch everything off, maybe. Um, okay, get something covered, you don't know, certainly this option, right?
Should be Jimmy Edwards. It should be, should be Jimmy Edwards, who was committed and everything the like. Things he bullied.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the allotments are out now, so.
Residents have to be coming along about our situation, that's all. They won't give back a thing.
Right, we'll resume the meeting. We're on item nine, sorry, we were on item ten, one of the allotments. Moving forward, can we just get this, if everybody agrees to get it put back how it was, and we'll move on from this item?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to planification carried on or withdraw planification?
What planification?
To level the, to level the surface.
No, it's to level it off. When did we put that in?
Months ago.
So he's leveling off?
He needs to move back to the original position.
Yeah, but we still want car park leveling off.
Oh, yeah. There's a planning issue here. There's planning, it's gone to the planning, hasn't it?
Yeah.
To level it.
So still level it, but move game back to where it was. That's my proposal anyway.
Right, we've got a second, all in favour? Item eleven, whistleblowing policy. Item eleven, whistleblowing policy, to review the whistleblowing policy. Alan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a proposal from councillor Hurd, if I can just explain, if she'll bear with me. The proposal, as I understand it, is that for any whistleblowing referrals, that they be referred to especially to specialist ex to the investigator. I'd recommend approval management.
Yeah, everybody agreed, yeah, all in favour? Item twelve, annual meetings twenty twenty-three, to confirm the respective dates for the annual council meeting and the annual town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With it being an election year, the annual council meeting has to be held within two weeks of the election. So bear that in mind and the bookings in this hall. I'd recommend Thursday, the eighteenth of May for the annual council meeting, and then twenty-third of May for the annual town meeting.
Are we all okay with that?
Yeah, because that'll not mask it independently. You'll be gone.
Do I have to cancel meeting again for ten minutes?
No, you won't.
I will do. Can you be quiet? I don't, I don't want you to speak, it's a council meeting. Right, could I move to item thirteen, month of bingo night, to consider holding a month of bingo night in Emsworth Community Centre?
Madam Chair, I must apologize to council media for this, because this was already on the events panel list, so my apologies, it's only been approved, my apologies.
So we can move on.
No, I kind of realize why, because we do need some funding for the first one, so to make it legitimate and legal, I'd like to request a hundred pounds from council to go in to buy some prizes for the bingo, and then it'll be self-funded after that. The money that we get for doing bingo will recover that one hundred pounds and it will come back into council eventually, so it won't cost the council anything.
Either, all right, they're going to take prizes anyway, aren't they? So it doesn't, you know.
It's just to get that initial one hundred legally through the council, that's all. I don't, I don't want to be accused of pinching money from the council.
Right, so do we all agree two hundred pound?
Yeah.
Could I, could I maybe propose that when you get your hundred pound back, the hundred pounds is then donated to a charity?
Yeah.
Then if the council's not, so I may give any money on it either.
So we'll move to item fourteen, investment strategy, to review the council's investment strategy.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is to confirm that the council invests its funds in an organisation called CCLA, which is effectively a local authority, a bank and investment fund. It has two funds, deposit fund and a property fund, so that's the council's strategy, just to confirm that, Madam Chair.
Yeah, we've got a proposal, a second.
I don't really understand what was that we done?
I don't see, but I'm not.
The council's funds, it invests them, it invests them in an organisation called CCLA, which from memory is called churches, charities, local authorities. It's effectively a deposit fund, but a deposit fund and a property fund, and the council invests in both, lots of councils. So you get more interest than property fund than the deposit fund, because super straits are quite low at the moment.
Yeah.
I just don't remember.
Is this holding on? Because we're already in it, aren't we?
Yeah, it's just confirming the status quo, there's nothing new.
It's, we're already in it.
Yeah.
Item fifty, forensic audit two nineteen, to consider having a forensic audit of the council's expenditure in two nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Yes, this is one that I brought in, I mentioned in the finance committee, considering the issue that we found with the accounts being removed online, I'd like to suggest that we have a forensic audit into the expenditure of FY twenty, sorry, nineteen twenty, from May to May, particularly looking at any contractors that we use. I think if we set some limits on it, just because, you know, cost wise, if we go anything above three hundred pounds in a payment, and that they're looked into, and particularly focused on spending at the water park. Have I got a second then?
Maybe. I'll second it.
Right, all in favour then? We're in the mess, let's, yeah, let's just get it done. Right, we're on item sixteen, special motion internal audit pursuant to selling order number nine, to consider a special motion received from councillors Dobson, Hareker, Hurd, Guinness, Middleton.
Dobson, sorry. Can I read? Dobson.
Can you be quiet, Alan?
No, can you pronounce my name properly?
Right.
You sound like Paul Edwards.
I cannot, I cannot.
Dobson, not Dobson.
I cannot carry on like this, I just can't.
Pronounce my name right then. It's there in writing for everybody to see, you cannot pronounce it right. It's like Janet Bauer called me Dobson. Paul Edwards called me Dobson. Call me Dobson.
We're just, I'm just going to postpone meeting again, I can't carry on like this.
No, you can't. The council's name is there in writing for you to see.
Alan?
I know she's trying to cancel meeting, so.
I'm not cancelling any meeting, I'm suspending it.
Can we just continue?
Again.
Can I make full progress, please?
Full progress, yeah.
Come on, Alan.
Why is she saying Dobson?
I know.
Do you want me to get me going?
No, I'm not going to.
Yeah, I don't need to wake me up.
Whoever said that, no, I'm not.
My name's Dobson, not Dobson.
All right, Alan.
And same to you, Kenyon, my name's Dobson, not Dobson.
Drinking.
Hey? I've been to my mother's funeral, if you want to know.
Yeah, I want you to come with a different attitude.
Why should I come with a different attitude? If you can't pronounce my name properly, why should I come with a different attitude?
The way that you can approach to ask her to do that, not carry on like.
I've asked her to do it.
And then why do you open now?
Come on, Peg, let me talk about it, please.
Let, let's sort this.
Carry on.
Yeah, so this, or am I right to?
No, I've postponed it for ten minutes. I cannot keep, I cannot, I can't keep it on.
This is going to be embarrassing, it's a council meeting, and you're all supposed to be professional. And it's on Zoom, they're all looking, it's too much, you're idiots.
I agree. I'm not the one shouting out.
You're the one who's drinking, start off, I'm not professional.
Just a minute, just a minute. I didn't know the reasons, but still.
You should have said that. People are listening in, and your chair, they're listening in, and he's saying be professional. You be professional, then we'll be all right.
Yeah, you're right.
I'm not speaking out loud.
You're right. How good you man.
Because people are listening into it, they're hearing me.
I know that.
They know that I'm talking right.
Yes, you are talking right.
This is what I'm going to keep saying, I put it on Facebook all the day, I don't know why I keep coming, but I do. And I bet everyone in the group, you know, they're all stupid. Jesus, that's how we're about to carry it.
That's good afternoon.
Yeah, but we should not know, aren't we? We find it out here.
You know, they can't hear us. You know, it's turned down. Very true. Came over yesterday, you know, and gave you lots of grace, telling you to find your visa, and be tired, and get some glasses, you like. Scar, wine. Wine out. Well, it is, it's about. And nothing can stop it, so I like it, to get it.
What are you laughing at, now, now? Now, now, back on. Now, now, back on.
Oh, he did, he did. He's also.
If you're, if you're. If you're too old to say.
The social system.
Fox have gone down.
Yeah, we're, we're, um, obviously on the, it's my picture, obviously, in the camera. Nice town, very nice town, very often. Just a doorway, on a. Oh, no, it did, yeah, that's with that. And I started, I took these paints, you know, come over, you know. With the long side of the light. Yeah, they're nice, yeah, they're nice, too, they're good. Down there, there's a little light here. Yeah, I know. All day. I wanted to, I wanted to send that, I just, I just, you know, another page, because then I would, I would, I do what, it's, you don't, it's what I did, except for the one I'm taking. But you know, do you know what? When you've been looking for.
Yeah.
I don't do it in this way. Well, you don't either. You're going to do it in my, right? No, you're just going to stay. Like, you don't want to have. And I think that's really hard to do.
Right, we resume meeting. So we were on the item sixteen.
Alan, E G.
Oh, sorry. Right, we're on item sixteen. So you've heard the special, the special motion. All in favour? Donna, do you wanna?
Yeah, can I explain why I'm putting it on there or? If you want. So this, it just seems weird that it's coming back, but on the first December, I think it... I would, in that meeting, it seemed to be rushed through a bit. So I'd like to propose that, you know, we've had this auditor for a few years now. We have found some issues within the forensic audit. I'd like to, Alan, to find us a new internal auditor, please, and I know we need to move quickly on this one. It's really very cool. Do I propose it, yeah?
Item seventeen, planning application, land of Kerber Road update, to receive an update on planning application for the land of Kerber Road, Emsworth.
I know councillor Kenyon asked this on the agenda, but just to confirm, there are one hundred and twenty seven, fifty eight?
Hundred and twenty eight.
Hundred and twenty eight dwellings have been approved for the site of Kerber Road, Madam Chair.
Is that, that, it's bad?
Is it that? Is that?
That microphone.
Is that okay? Is that better, right? There are one hundred and twenty eight dwellings approved for the land at Kerber Road, Madam Chair.
Councillor Kenyon, did you want to say it now? Right, so we'll move on then. Item eighteen, public question time, to receive questions from members of the public and to receive any reports from community meetings. Can you not shout out?
Why?
Right, Cathy.
Okay, Donal. Mine is relating to the final meeting on the ninth of March. The chairperson made a statement, and part of that statement was that the chair, choose yourself, gee, and the town clerk asking if you would report yourself to the YLC, to be investigated. Have you done that? And if you haven't, why haven't you?
No, I haven't done it. Could I just say? Just to correct that, I asked for the clerk, the chairman, the council, not themselves, just to be really clear on language, I didn't ask, not you guys personally, it was in regards to...
But what I'm actually saying is that they...
They have to do it, yeah.
They were the only two people that were in a position to do that.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you, I just wanna be clear on language.
No.
No, you haven't.
No.
Can we ask her?
Why not?
I couldn't answer that, Madam Chair. I did discuss with the council, Maron. I'm happy to do that, but the forensic audit will cover it. No thanks to YLC, but I'm ninety-nine point nine percent certain that the YLC didn't have the capacity to do this kind of thing. But a forensic auditor certainly would. I'm happy to report it to YLC, but I suspect that's what the answer would be, and that forensic...
Can you just wait while it's...
Please don't interrupt.
Saying what it's saying.
I'm happy to report to the YLC, but the forensic audit will look in far greater depth than they can.
Yeah, I think the question was to look into, get advice from us. I think it's definitely worth still reporting it, Alan. Sorry, I don't remember. Did you talk about it on the phone or email?
One of them, I forget which one was it.
Yeah, I still wait to me.
Right, so that's, obviously that's the answer to that.
Right, and my other question is on item eighteen, which I know is in exclusion. Eighteen was, again, the ninth of March meeting. Item eighteen was in exclusion to consider a quote, a quote for cameras and CCTV. We've not had no minutes, so I don't know what was, what was proposed or voted on or anything else. It wasn't, at the beginning of the meeting, no one said that they had a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in that item. So can I actually have this minted, please? So I'm asking again, did any of you councillors, when you were discussing that quote, did any of you have a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in that item, the agenda?
If I would have had one, I would have put a pecuniary or non pecuniary, just like I have done tonight. So no isn't the answer.
So you're not saying that you have no pecuniary interest in who that comes?
I'm not speaking for artistic councillors.
Right. No. Okay, like I said, if I can have that minted, so that if it does turn out to be something that is different, then it is minted.
Anyone else?
Obviously, it's not as serious as what all says. You've all got on about doing this town for the down at Warrapack. As I say, I've been in that soft play area. It is absolutely disgusting. How long's it been in that? I bet it's never been steam cleaned, has it, Alan?
It's...
Do you know about soft play area? Because my daughter used to do it.
Can you just tell us, can you just... Well, it gets cleaned and it gets deep cleaned from the...
Steam cleaned?
From a professional firm that has...
How often? How long's it been in?
Just...
The carpet's filthy. And you're letting toddlers go in there, and then you're watching all these areas outside doing. I suggest you go in there and crawl round, and then there too. Alan?
The prospered, inspected it in January, can it pass?
Inspected? Why, why is it all cracks in it then?
Cracks in it? Alan, can we just look into that? Because I don't know anything about cracks.
It was steam cleaning properly.
It does get steam cleaned.
I've heard, oh, we're having kettle. I've heard, the proper heard.
We'll look into it, I'll just answer, Jim. Right.
Can we suck it on board?
I've listened to what you're saying, Alan's got it, and I've just asked him to look into it.
And he not serious, seriousness on it, Alan. Yeah, can you get it seen clean? On board, in the carpet?
Anybody else?
The recent letter, what you posted?
I can't hear you.
The recent letter that you posted from Your Choice Bound Security?
Yeah.
Did you read it before you actually put it on?
Yeah.
Right, the bottom sentence on it actually said that it supplied more than one camera. Is that correct?
Body cam.
Body cam?
Yeah.
How many did they actually provide then?
Two.
Two. Right, now, are they on the assets register?
I can't remember yet, but the... The asset register is at the end of the year, so if they're not on yet, they will be next month.
Right, so moving on, the last paragraph, a recommendation. Right, to disclose the make and model. Okay? It was a recommendation, that was all. So why can't you reveal it?
The decision not to disclose information was taken by the fans committee, not by me.
Yeah, there you go.
Cathy?
Mr. Gray.
Two questions, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, you had two questions.
But Mr. Gray just said that you...
No, you had two, you had two questions, Cathy, you had two questions. You had two questions. Can you just? Can you just?
Can I answer, can I ask a question, Colin? So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not letting you say you've got, there were two cameras, but I'm in voices, just bought one for that three thousand nine hundred and odd bob for one camera. The other camera was bought in two thousand and nineteen.
For Amazon?
For Amazon.
No, we've, we've got no, no. When body cam, I've worked my memory down, so part of it's maybe wrong, but I'm fairly sure I'm right. When the body cam?
Can we be quiet, please, and let him answer? Can you be quiet, John?
We bought a body cam, a relatively inexpensive one, I think it was from Amazon or I got something like that in the summer twenty nineteen. From memory, something like eighty pounds, something like that. That was just one, like a deposit on sort of thing. Then going back maybe a year or so later, we bought a proper body cam for one officer to use. And then going back, maybe six months ago, something like that, came to council to get another body cam, a floating body cam. And the council approved that. And then a couple of weeks ago, a representative from Your Choice, perhaps it was last week, a couple of weeks ago, came in exclusion and explained to the fans committee about, well, you know, watching everything about the CCTV, about body cams, about the costs, all that sort of thing. And I don't think I'm out of order to say that the representative was well received by all councillors and that all councillors took on board what he said. And all councillors agreed, not to disclose the body cam make and model details.
Last second question. So you bought one just after, you got one in two thousand and nineteen, then you got one further on, and then you got this new one six months ago.
Moment, the council.
Yeah. You've been picking, huh? I don't understand why, when we bought the last one, we had to pay, buy all the package if we already had it for the last one.
Package, I don't mean...
Well, we came, we got a camera the second month, what we got...
The quote and details of second body cam came to council or fans committee, I forget when, and the council or fans committee approved it.
But we didn't see all the details, I think. We thought, last meeting. But what I'm saying is to you, I've got, I've got to get this into me head. You bought one in two thousand and nineteen, then you bought one a bit further after, and then you bought one last six months. But this last one, we had to buy all the package again.
At the docking station?
We had to buy all the package again, you know, we had to pay for websites and everything. But why didn't we, why didn't we already have it installed?
The answer is, I don't know. And really, that would have been a question, I said, a rep, a couple of weeks ago.
Right, yeah, one more question, yeah.
Right, can I just ask, Alan? Have you been blackmail or bullying, Alan? Can you confirm?
Bit of all, I think.
That's a new question, Gary. And I've not been answered a question like that, I'm sorry.
Right, so we're gonna move on then. Exclusion of press and public, members of the public and press to be excused for the consideration of business of a confidential nature.